Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission Meeting to order. The first thing is I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me and the commissioners in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Tanya Bowers.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Laramine. Excused. Abel Campos. Excused. Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are five members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission's task was considering the long-term growth and the development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Spectrum Cable, PSC Channel 191, and they'll be broadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded, so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. You can click on the video on-demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available at the back table, so you can also follow along with the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask you to silence any of your cell phones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come forward to the podium, clearly speak into the microphone, and state your name and city of record, or city of address, for our records. Before we begin, I'd like to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington state law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only to be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington state law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in decisions or discussions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show, there were no declarations from Planning Commission members. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to object, who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show, also, there were no declarations. We value your input here, and this, we as a Planning Commission need and definitely need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to the City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed on the official record of the City Council that they will use to make their decision. I encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from October 20th, 2022. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you have the opportunity to take a look at them, and I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, or else any questions or concerns.
I would like to know that the meeting minutes of October 20th, 22, be approved.
Paul second. Commissioner Mendez moved, and Commissioner Handler seconded. For all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is old or unfinished business, and we have no items there, so we'll move right into the next section, which is a presentation on the Broadmoor Master Plan and tax increment finance presentation, presentation from Bob Stowe.
Hi, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This presentation and staff report is intended to provide the commission with the summary and the status of the efforts related to the Broadmoor Master Plan. This is a significant planning effort that has required the development of an environmental impact statement and new proposed development regulations that'll end up in a master plan itself that are intended to implement the vision for the Broadmoor planning area. Next slide, please. Next slide. As a reminder, some of the key objectives for this effort have included trying to get ahead of the growth before it occurs by assessing the necessary infrastructure, particularly with regards to utilities and transportation, and also providing a level of certainty and predictability with regard to the permitting process, and particularly with the environmental mitigations associated with development of such a large area. Next slide. Summary of the events to date, the revised determination of significance, which kicked off the EIS itself, was issued in July of 2021. Since then, there have been numerous meetings with property owners, stakeholders, and other public agencies that have helped in developing both the environmental assessment itself and the master plan document. Most recently, a significant amount of effort has been placed on the finalizing the transportation network that'll be needed to support the, the growth in the Broadmoor area. Next slide. We've shown this to the Planning Commission before, but one of the big efforts with regards to the EIS and the master plan was revising and coming up with an alternative land use, which you see on the right side. The version on the left is what is currently in our comprehensive plan, and this variety of land uses there. And one of the efforts we wanted to move forward on was creating a much more simplified version of a land use that would still implement the vision of Broadmoor, and more importantly, changing the land use and the zoning underneath, that lives underneath the land use, so that we could actually achieve the growth target assumed in the Broadmoor planning effort that was also used in development of our comprehensive plan, our transportation master plan, and the capital sewer plan as well. The next slide. I've talked about this already, if you want the next slide. This is just kind of an example of some of the images of what we would expect to see for some of the development typologies in the Broadmoor area. Again, not exact, but the development standards addressing things such as setbacks, public amenities, like where the benches are and the sidewalks are, how wide they are, street widths, pedestrian facilities, bike lanes, et cetera. So the development regulations, when you see them in December, will be fairly lengthy, but the intent is that they would yield results that, that may lead to development of this, of this type. So, on the next slide, in terms of what's next, we are completing the draft environmental impact statement. We plan on issuing that environmental impact statement in December and hosting a public hearing to give both the public and the Planning Commission opportunity to view the document, review the document, and the plan itself. That's a 30-day requirement for a public comment period, so that'll last through mid-January, where we will come back and hopefully issue the final EIS with our recommendation to council. And following that, in February, this master plan would be incorporated into the other items associated with the 2022 Conference of Plan Amendment dockets, which is an item later on on tonight's agenda. And with that, I'd like to now introduce Bob Stowe from Stowe Development and Strategies to talk about the tax increment financing component for the Broadmoor Master Plan.
Great, thank you. For your record, my name is Bob Stowe, Stowe Development Strategies. I'm a community development and economic development consultant for cities, counties, some tribal governments, and some higher ed. And so I've been working with the City of Pasco for over a year on the Broadmoor project, and of course, the tax increment financing over the last several months. Next slide. What I wanted to do this evening is give you really a broad overview of the law, tax increment financing, and then get very specific into the project analysis, which was submitted to the state, provided to the City Council when they adopted their ordinance earlier this year in October. Next slide. So this is a model of tax increment financing that's general and can be applied to really any tax increment financing program across the country. The difference in Washington's law is that it was really created to, to make sure that all of the existing taxing districts were not harmed by, as a result of tax increment financing, so that they will continue to receive an existing tax base, the same tax base that they would have received had no development occurred, and that will continue on. And it's just the incremental taxes that are generated by the new development caused by the infrastructure investment made by the TIP sponsor, or in this case, the, the City of Pasco. So those incremental taxes are what will be funding and fueling the private development as, as it moves forward. Next slide. So tax increment financing in Washington state's available to cities, counties, and ports. Those are the only three jurisdictions that it's available for. It's really a powerful economic development tool. Our law is, the state's law is designed more for a specific project and site, a project that's ready to go and simply needs some infrastructure investment rather than, you know, tax increment financing, looking for a project. So it's not something that you'd want to use and, and without a project in line, because if you issue the debt, or if you put the public infrastructure in, regardless of if private development occurs or not, the city's still responsible for that debt service or for that infrastructure. There's a, there's a but for requirement in the statute, but for the infrastructure investment, the desired private development would not occur. And so we, we've looked at that analysis to determine that the, the TIP improvements that are proposed are those which are outside the reach of private development's ability to finance and then build and still have a viable development. Of course, tax increment financing does result in the creation of new jobs, and we forecasted both the one-time jobs as a result of construction, as well as the ongoing jobs from the various businesses that will locate, there's public benefits, there's certainly the construction of the desired development within Broadmoor. And then the taxes, of course, from the development itself help pay for the infrastructure that caused the development in the first place. Next slide. This is a laundry list of the types of infrastructure that could be funded with tax increment financing, and the key point is that all the infrastructure that is to be funded with tax increment financing has to be owned by the public entity. Doesn't necessarily have to be owned by the City of Pasco, could be owned by the county or the port, but in this case, all the infrastructure that's proposed to be financed with TIP financing will be owned by the City of Pasco. And again, the laundry list includes typical infrastructure of streets and roads, water and sewer, but it also includes some unique provisions of parking dock facilities, park and ride facilities, parking community facilities, mitigation of brownfields, and also allows for some energy efficiency, affordable housing, and historic preservation. Next slide. The key elements of the, of the law is that city, county, or port must adopt an ordinance that would designate a tax increment area. They must identify the improvements that would be financed, and then whether or not bonds are going to be issued. There are some limitations with tax increment financing. Some of the key ones are that no more than two active increment areas may be created by any of the sponsoring jurisdictions, and they may not overlap. So the City of Pasco could form another tax increment area, the county could form two increment areas, as well as the port could form two increment areas. The increment areas may not total more than $200 million in assessed valuation, or more than 20% of the total assessed valuation of the sponsoring jurisdiction who is issuing the, the TIA, whichever is less. Another key point is that you cannot add any public improvements or change the boundary of a tax increment area once the ordinance is adopted. Must include also a deadline as to when construction of the public improvements will begin, and the statute sets out that those must generally be within five years unless there is good cause for an extension. The local government may also only receive TIP revenues for a period of time that's necessary to pay for the cost of public improvement. So if the public improvements are, or for debt service or the bonds are issued for 20 years, that's the only amount of time that a TIA would be in existence, would be, would be, would be 20 years. And the maximum amount of time the TA can be in existence would be 25 years. Next slide. So the tax impacts of the area are very minimal, if at all, if any, to the resulting areas throughout the city. This is, want to be clear, this is not a, an additional tax upon property owners. It's the same tax levy that would apply both within the tax increment area as it applies outside the tax increment area. And so all the taxpayers and developers are paying the same amount as they normally would. The only difference is that the, the, the new assessed valuation that's created from the development within the, the tax increment area that's designated, all of those taxes from those participating jurisdictions go to, to the City of Pasco that will then use it to pay for the debt, infrastructure, or pay for any debt service associated with infrastructure. And so it's the developer who's paying the same levy that he would have paid if the development had gone forward without a TIA, it's just now they're being redirected to the City of Pasco. So that means the port, as well as the county's levy amount is being applied in this case, and then that amount is being directed to the City of Pasco to pay for the infrastructure improvements. Next slide. This is the, diving into the project analysis specifically for, for the Broadmoor project. We, we illustrated here 671 total acres, that's represented in all the colored portions on this map. There's 451 gross acres available for development, and you can see how they're laid out by, by, by the private developer of 87 acres for single-family, just over 102 acres for multifamily residential, mixed-use, almost 105 acres, commercial property, 156 acres, and then over 220 acres that's associated with the gravel pit that will become available once the reclamation plan is completed in the future and will likely be used for single-family moving forward. Next slide. The infrastructure needs that we've identified, looking at the, the, the land uses and the projected development of the Broadmoor site include $39 million in TIP improvements. The project analysis actually identified a range of improvements depending upon what types of development might come forward at this time, between 32 million and 39 million at full buildout, but those include key corridors and intersections, interstate improvements that, at Interstate 82 and Road 100, and then water sewer and stormwater improvements. Likewise, the private developer, right now, all of the property within Broadmoor is owned by a single entity, but as those parcels sell, either the develop, the person who sold that property to the, to another developer will be responsible for infrastructure, or that subsequent developer will be responsible for infrastructure improvements between 39 and 45 million dollars, that's, that is estimated. Also included, almost 30 acres of land would be dedicated by the Broadmoor development or private developers within Broadmoor back of the city, as well as 34 acres of land that will be needed for some of the, 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 the public improvements funded by the private development. Next slide. So this is a map that, that illustrates the, the TIP improvements, which, again, this represents $39 million worth, worth of development. The TIP improvements are those, in those areas, primarily on the key corridors of the city, and, and also with development that has commercial development, mixed-use, or just straight commercial, and that includes Broadmoor, and includes the two blocks, two key blocks of commercial right off of Broadmoor as it goes to the west, and then also includes interchange improvements on the, on the interstate. And so everything in red are TIP improvements, and then everything, and the purple would be the first phase of what the Broadmoor development would be responsible for, and then followed with that in blue or, or somewhat aqua color would be some remaining Broadmoor properties developer improvements that they'd be required to put in. Next slide. So in the project analysis, remember, there is a $200 million threshold or cap on the, the size of the area that you could form as a tax increment area. This area, because it's vacant, it has a low value of assessed value of 30 million, so it's well below the $200 million threshold, meaning that City of Pasco, the next time if it wanted to form another TIA, why the first TIA isn't still in existence, it would have $170 million capacity for its next assessed value with respect to another TIA. Next slide. So we looked at several different scenarios, development program, based on really an aggressive schedule of, of sort of scope and product type, and then timing of when that development occur. We looked at another, another scenario, which we called moderate, which is, you know, fewer, fewer development types, or fewer density, and a longer timeframe of instruction, and then all the way down to a very conservative sort of scenario, where we just looked at a few lots being developed, as if that, as if that was gonna, all that was gonna be developed over a 25-year period. And so it ranged for the city between $13 million, or almost $14 million at the low end, to a high of $28 million. That's just the city's levy, but you also add the county's levy and the port district's levy that would be contributed to the city. And so that now range, that range grows to $25 million to $50 million of revenues that can be expected, are used to be able to pay for debt services associated with infrastructure. And so we've already factored in a, a cost of capital in this scenario of about 4.5% or 4.5% interest rate. So in other words, these numbers reflect, under the conservative scenario, the city can support $25 million worth of, of infrastructure investment, and the moderate, 42 million, and the aggressive, 50 million. For the purposes of the project mount, analysis, we decided that the moderate represented the most likely scenario that would occur within Broadmoor. And so that $39 million can be fully supported by the $42 million that's expected to come into the, to the city over a 25-year period. You'll see in a short moment that there's some interim financing that would need to be done until the development stabilizes in the city. Next slide. So a lot of information here, but you can see just sort of the three main areas. Again, under the aggressive, the top line, there's only four years in which some interim financing would be necessary, because again, the development doesn't happen overnight. It takes several years to, to stabilize, and so it's the later years that generate more than enough revenue to pay for the full cost, but there, the first four years, you'll, the city would need to have some interim financing if the development occurred under this format, under the aggressive scenario. Under the moderate scenario, a few more years, there's one, there's almost seven years worth of interim financing that would be necessary. And of course, under the conservative scenario, all, there's never a year in which the city doesn't have to, to come up with some additional funds in order to, to fill the gap associated with, with any infrastructure investment. Next slide. When we projected the jobs under the aggressive scenario, we projected, you know, 1.8, 1.8 million dollars of investment, all the way down to $533 million under conservative scenario. So that's the, that's the, the type of investment that we would expect under sort of that kind of sensitivity analysis, and those generated between 1,800 jobs for construction, all the way up to 6,600 jobs under the aggressive scenario. And you can see the down below, in terms of the ongoing jobs, total jobs under the aggressive of almost 1,100, and under the conservative, 280, and where we arrived at for the moderate was just over 1,100 jobs would be created from the development. Next slide. This reflects additional incremental revenues beyond the property tax for both the city and the county, who are the, the, the major recipients of additional revenue. For the city, it would be sales tax on construction, ongoing sales tax, some utility taxes, and those are totaled, at least in the aggressive scenario, that in addition to the property tax revenues, the city would collect over $53 million over a 25-year period, and their moderate scenario, $50 million, and their conservative scenario, $36 million. So in all cases, there'd be more than what the property tax would generate based on the type of development that would be occurring, and significant dollars would also be coming into the county based on that same forecast between 17 million and 23 million dollars. Next slide. We also looked at, you know, various levels of, of mitigation and how the city might be able to pay for debt service that were, for to issue at $39 million worth of infrastructure improvements, but the development didn't happen as quickly as what was expected, or worst case, it simply didn't happen at all. How would it, because the city's still responsible for paying that debt, we looked at sort of four levels of financial protection. One was just those additional taxes. Of course, it wouldn't be the same amount of taxes as there'd be less development under a slower schedule, but nonetheless, there would still be some additional taxes that the city could then use initially to help pay for the debt service. Second would be, looked at really a conservative development scenario, and that there would be, you know, only development, a few lots that would occur initially, and then nothing would occur after 2030. And so that's another sort of way to conservatively look at what would be possible in the Broadmoor area, area, and then sort of use that as a mitigation measure. And level three would be that only two lots, if only two of the lots were developing in the Broadmoor area on the commercial side, what type of revenues would that generate? And then how could, how much of that would be able then to support the, the $39 million with the debt issuance? Of course, you'd likely have to, if you needed all 39 million, you'd have to combine level one, two, and three, and maybe also some of level four, depending upon how much development is happening. But level four was the city's reserves, which it has as, as much, it has sufficient reserves in order to support the, the entire debt service in its entirety if it needed to. Of course, the city has, you know, greater needs in terms of infrastructure investments, and it means of operational expenses that it may want to use those funds for. So the first course of action would be simply to use the, the TIP resources that are available, but if it needed to, it would be able to pay and support its debt service. We also looked at debt issuance timing, when the debt should be issued, waiting for the development to occur at a time, or at least occurs sufficiently enough so that the city has enough confidence that develop, private development is moving forward, that would be the time to issue the debt service, so that the city has more confidence that that development's going to occur. Cost containment in the bidding process. The other way to make sure that the, the city is, is, is able to pay its debt service for infrastructure is to lower the cost as much as possible on the construction of those improvements. And then private development mitigation. One of the things that we've done is a really conservative estimate for multifamily housing density, although the code would allow for much higher density. We projected in the development performer of the TIP revenues, a density of only 28 to 45 units. And then the letter of agreement, the city does have a letter of agreement with Broadmoor Properties, who is the owner of the property, in terms of their commitment to move forward with the, the construction of not only the, the infrastructure that will be funded by the private sector, but also the vertical development associated with many of the lots. Next slide. So in the project analysis, we've sort of concluded, you know, 50 or 60 pages of, of analysis with sort of the findings and bottom line, and, and those are that, one, the Broadmoor development would not be viable without tax increment financing, infrastructure costs are just too great at this time for a private developer to be able to deliver the type of density and, and, and types of uses that are proposed. This would also promote a higher quality development, rather than, you know, just a few lots being developed at a very low density, single-story, maybe RV, sales. The, the type of development that would exist under the, the TIP analysis would be much greater, more opportunities for placemaking than would exist, more public amenities than would exist if, if no TIP infrastructure were installed. We believe that there's a strong nexus between the proposed infrastructure that's proposed and the project analysis, as well to the, to the development that it would generate. The estimates are conservative, there are no impacts to affordable housing, to the local business community, local schools, or to fire service. Each of the taxing districts will benefit from increased taxes associated with, with the TIA or tax increment area. However, there are some inherent risks with any real estate project, and tax increment financing is a real estate development project, and so there are some risks that development may not occur based on projections, but we, we think that we have, we've tried to at least adequately address and identify what those risks are. And I think there's no better project that can demonstrate the power of tax increment financing than what the Broadmoor project represents, and be glad to address any questions that the, the commission might have about Broadmoor Properties, tax increment financing, or tax increment financing in, in general. Actually, I have, actually, I have one more slide, I'm sorry. Next slide. On server schedule, the council did adopt the ordinance forming the tax increment area in the end of October. That require, that allows then the, the tax increment area to actually be created in June of 2023. That's the next cycle that a TIA can be, can be created. The city's already been working on the engineering, the design of, of the TIP improvements, and those, those are well underway. And then, as indicated, June 1, 2023 is the official date that the tax increment area is formed. area is formed and that revenues, once development occurs, will start flowing to the city. So now I'll be glad to to address any questions on by the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Stowe. Um commissioners, specific questions for either staff or Mr. Stowe on this presentation?
Uh yeah, this is Commissioner Mendez. I had a question. Um I think in one of the slides, um it said that the uh the city's general fund will be uh will be servicing the debt until the TIP revenues start coming in, if I understand that correctly. Uh there any including the interest, I I presume. Is there any uh plans to reimburse refund the uh the general fund, which was, of course, supported and funded by folks that are not going to be enjoying the benefits of the new development?
That that's an that's an excellent question, yes. And so to the extent that the TIP revenues are capable of supporting um the the projections that we've laid out under the moderate scenario, there're sufficient revenues there to pay so the city can pay itself back for any interim financing that it needed to do in the early years, it can pay itself back once the TIP revenues and the development stabilizes and they come in.
A follow-on question. What is the projected um timeline? It's not gonna take twenty-five years, is it?
No, I think most of the development that we show um being created occur within uh a ten-year period, ten to the twelve-year period.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions?
Um I have a question. Pardon my, and I have a say here. Um I'm looking at slide number eight and slide number ten. How how do those two slides work together?
Uh let's see what slide we're talking about.
Commissioner Henler, maybe you have.
Yeah.
In our deck.
In our deck, it's eight and ten.
Excuse me, it's the um one um it's the project analysis, private development, the six hundred and seven, the broad colored um master plan. And then uh also Broadmore improvements, the the two. Yeah, go back, you were you were there at one of them there. Not not that one.
Towards the end.
Not that one. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that one. And then also the uh the the that uh and then the next one, the next the slide, uh yeah, right after that one. That yeah, and that one. How how do those two work together? Um and again, I'm I I I'm just trying to physically understand. You know, I see.
So what we tried to do on on this, the Broadmore improvement is lay out the street system, the major corridors that would exist with a development um being proposed by by Broadmoor to the extent that the types of uses um and development that we expect occur at each of these parcels. Um this is the street system, there's some this grid pattern of street systems um that we've laid out um and then have shown, you know, again, in the red, the TIP projects and everything else being the responsibility of the private developer. But the land uses um perhaps um city staff could address how they are different or similar to what's proposed in your con- comprehensive plan from what we've used in the project analysis.
Okay. Okay, so. Okay, so, all right, I just I was looking at the the proposed land u- uses, the parcel key keys up there and how those overlaid on the um the improvements. So anyway, I I understand a little better now. Thank oh, thank you.
And I I did want to point out that um the improvement map here north is to the right. So it's a little confusing.
Other commissioners have questions for staff or Mr. Stowe?
Hi, this is.
This map. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Um since we're on the slide that I have questions about, um looking at the tiny print right in the key below uh the table there versus notes. And um so does that number one represent? Does that represent the um current current setup of what or is that representing what the thirty-nine million uh TIF will be paying for along with that number two notes?
Yeah, there there are some roads that that note just core development road only such as the road in the in the purple.
Okay.
We're just trying to identify that that includes uh uh the roads only, the basic road, it doesn't include the in water and sewer, but it doesn't include of the additional um improvements that would be necessary to to when development happens, um sidewalks, storm drainage, et cetera. So it's just the core road, whereas number one, you you see such as most of stuff under the TIP improvements, they're in the red, would be the four road improvements.
Okay. Okay, I understand that now. Okay, thank you. Um second, I I wanted to share out, it seems like there's often two ways to be able to share about um public funding and TIFs, bonds, things like that, that um people people present in two ways, and um I feel like you did a really good job of doing it the right way. So thank you very much for breaking down terminology, great graphics, being able to help us and the public follow. So thank you very much for for the package you put together.
Welcome.
Uh was it Commissioner Bowers said the other question? I wasn't sure. One more question.
I was I was just curious, um I I noticed in the red for the TIP project, the interchange, is that the only um portion of that interchange that is included in this TIP work?
Yes.
That, okay. So so nothing else? I I I assume this just follows the transportation plan as it is right now.
Um I believe the tip, the the city's tip does have the same improvement. That's correct.
Go ahead. A quick question, um I I assume there's a traffic study that's been done on this too, right?
There's been uh some traffic studies that the city's performed, there's been some traffic studies that that the Broadmoor development has performed. Each development, as I understand it, as it comes to the city, will have to also perform its own traffic analysis based on the development that they're proposing. But we've done some analysis or the city and and Broadmoor Properties has done some analysis based on this level of planning.
O- okay, thank you. I I cause I see like there's gonna be a lot of cars out there and just wanting to uh make sure that, you know, we're not mopping ourselves into a corner with a huge traffic problem.
Yes, we don't want another Road sixty-eight, right? So yeah.
Right.
Any other question? I had a couple of questions on um. One of the questions was just, you did this project analysis, was this project analysis based on alternative one or alternative two for the, I I guess there you at the initial you you, Jacob, you covered that there's two alternatives. One is the old, just no changes, and the other one is number two with some changes. Was the project analysis done on the first or second uh alternate? Cause wouldn't that impact this ba- based on how you're gonna break up the zoning and the density and all that?
Yeah, I I can maybe sup- uh supplement some information here. Uh what are the challenges with the current um land use um as prescribed in the comprehensive plan and also with the existing developments um that exists within the current Broadmoor area and also those to the north and south where that they um they that the densities at which they were developed at would not allow the city eventually to meet its growth target for the Broadmoor area? And so one of the weird things we've had to do is is sort of develop a land use that can actually beef up the proposed densities, um uh the uh allowable density, so we can actually hit our growth target of roughly seven thousand households, um several thousand jobs. Um with the current land use um and on top of the current developments, we would not achieve that growth target. So part of it has been kind of back forecasting in a sense to make sure that the alternative to land use that you saw early on in the presentation um actually represents the uh it could implement the densities that have been uh used in the forecasts um in the transportation master plan, in the sewer utility comprehensive plan, and certainly in the efforts um that Bob Stowe and his um colleagues have been working on.
So this project, all these moderate, aggressive, and conservative are based on that alternative too? Okay, that's really what I was, yeah, thanks. And then we're not, the other thing I was think I'm clear on, but I wanted to make sure I'm clear with, um and I don't know that we have any influence on that anyway, is that our is this taking on the debt service? We're not taking on bonds with this, is just tapping into Pasco reserves that are paid back depending upon the recovery of the TIF, right?
No, we'll be, there'll be a bond uh issuance.
Thank you. Um commissioners, any other questions for staff or Mr. Stowe on this presentation? And I think the next steps are.
Hi, this is.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Bowers, and um I was just confused with the two proposed EIS alternatives. Did you want feedback on those or or were you just sharing that they're both possibilities?
Those are the two land uses that, uh well, the first um, this is the slide that's really on in the presentation. Um when we get there, the slide on the left represents the current land use designations. Uh and the slide, the photo on the right side illustrates the proposed alternative to land uses that we believe are necessary to actually uh accommodate the densities necessary to meet the growth target. And um the master plan of the EIS will be shared with the Planning Commission as full documents at the December Planning Commission meeting and again in January for your comments, public comments as well. Um and then we'll obviously address any uh of the input we received in a final effort.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, anything else? Yeah, so next steps, it sounds like there's public hearings in December and January, and this alternate will be presented for recommendation to council and all that. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Stowe. Thank you, staff.
Good day.
All right, well, we move into um the next phase of of our meeting, which is the public hearing session, and uh we have three items on the public hearing uh agenda tonight. The first is a code amendment, residential design standards, CA twenty-twenty-two zero-zero-one, and I'll open it up for staff comments.
Uh good, uh next slide, please. Good evening, uh members of the Planning Commission meeting. Uh this is an item that you've seen, I think, throughout most of twenty-twenty-two, um and we're excited to present this to you tonight and ask for your recommendation. The object, the objective of this effort was uh to make the necessary and critical revisions to the zoning code and development standards uh to increase housing options, flexibility, and simplicity, um and also to allow for our zoning code to actually implement the comprehensive plan itself. Uh this, uh next slide, please. So one of the key differences uh that will occur with a positive recommendation include kind of a significant revision to the way our zoning code is laid out, it'll be more tabular, and it'll be more customized based on the housing typology. So right now, if you were probably should have shown an example of our zoning code as it's written today, uh but it's kind of a lengthy bullet-pointed list of of various standards regarding lot sizes, lot coverages, heights, et cetera. Uh we are proposing to structure the zoning codes slightly uh differently so that it's based up still under the zoning code, but based uh more on the typology of the home or the product itself. So what you see on this slide here would be an example of what that would look like. I also highlighted some of the key changes in green. Um so it shows the minimum lot sizes, and you can see how that changes based on the more denser products with regards to townhomes, duplexes, et cetera. So a uh uh townhome in the R-one district would require thirty-six hundred square feet per dwelling unit um in the R-one and fifteen hundred in the R-four. Next slide, uh so again, some more changes to the minimum site frontages and widths. And again, similar setup, trying to keep things a little bit more formalized and tabular. Um so again, an example would be a duplex in the R-one lot would re- an R-one zone would require sixty feet of frontage per lot, so two duplexes, two units on a lot, and that would be decreased to thirty feet in the R-four zoning district. On the next slide, uh setbacks. And again, uh this would reduce the current requirement on the rear setback. Uh today, uh the requirement is that the rear setback is equal to dwelling height, and obviously, we're trying to increase housing options and density, and if you have a thirty-two-foot building, you're gonna require a thirty-two-foot rear setback. Um we couldn't find that standard in many other communities, it doesn't seem to match with best practices, and we received a significant feedback from our development community that a fifteen-foot rear setback would be much more appropriate. I think it's also similar to um our neighboring communities, um the city of Kennewick. So I've reduced the setback in the front to fifteen feet. You can obviously have more depending on your development pattern or uh product, and twelve-foot uh uh on the front. On the next slide, uh this covers lot coverages, and we do wanna highlight uh a a last change that staff is recommending to the Planning Commission tonight. Um and in the staff report, you will see a few statements and comments regarding the lot coverages for detached single family in the R-one and R-two. We had another chance to meet with some in our development community. Um and I think it's in, one of the things we want to try to avoid is having arbitrary numbers and requirements, and with the intent of increasing options and flexibility, we certainly don't wanna prescribe an arbitrary prescription or limit on that. So in both the R-one and R-two district, we would recommend that it would be increased to sixty percent. Also, keep in mind that the overall density of uh development is limited by a variety of factors, even with these proposed changes. Uh most critically, that would be the density limits of the adopted comprehensive plan and and also the height limits that we have uh in the zoning code as well. So that'd be the the big, that would be the only change between the last meeting and and tonight's meeting. Uh on the next slide, uh this is, uh you may recall that one of the uh initial attempts uh with this effort was to develop standards for multifamily housing. Uh we don't currently have any standards for multifamily housing. This proposal would do that, and it would also add some standards and regulations with regards to um parking and driveways. Um I think the big one here would be the reduction in parking requirements from two to one on studio and one-bedroom units. On the next slide, uh is pedestrian um and vehicle um circulation. So here, uh we would uh recommend a uh access points uh onto the site at various locations, um including for pedestrians and non-motorized vehicles and obviously conformance with ADA standards. Uh we obviously don't want to be too overburdened, some are prescriptive, but we also want to listen to uh some of the results we've had from numerous surveys asking for uh more quality design, more emphasis on pedestrian realm. So um after looking at best practices, this seems to best align with that. Um and I believe that's the last slide of the presentation. So again, uh staff would ask for your recommendation um as presented in tonight's staff report. Happy to answer any questions from the Planning Commission this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Um I know, yeah, we've, I mean, you can look at the schedule here. We've uh we've talked about this in workshops and public hearings you um for the last year. You guys have done a lot of tweaking, fine-tuning. Um so I guess I'll open it up for commissioners first to uh see if there's feedback or questions for staff on this, and then we'll move to the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions? So the the one correction, I you the the slide you had for building height for detached in R-one and R-two, um the the stuff I got this week said forty-five percent, fifty percent, but your recommendation is you're making those unified at sixty percent across the board. I just wanna clarify. Correct. Okay, good. Commissioners, no questions or feedback for staff on this?
Uh just a a question on that sixty percent, is that a maximum? Is there something that was agreed to with um the HBA?
Uh yes, the initial um proposal from the um HBA Home Builders Association, the Tri-Cities, was to have a sixty percent lot coverage. I think one of the things that staff, we wanted to be careful about was uh uh the initial effort was to increase housing options and housing affordability in the um uh we we didn't want to allow for enormously large homes on much smaller lots. However, doing so automatically, or at least. Doing so automatically or at least prescribing a a maximum that was too low would inherently limit the intent of what this proposal was supposed to do in the first place. Which is increase flexibility, um also keeping in mind that height is still a a requirement, density limits are still a requirement. And there's still other requirements with regards to setbacks, we didn't just eliminate all of the standards, um we felt that this was a safe. Um uh a safe uh decision to make and all it certainly aligns with the uh recommendation from the home builders group as well.
Excellent, commissioners, any other questions? Well, uh I applaud staff for all the work and going back and forth and, you know, you guys have really worked on a. A Goldilocks kind of option here, it's like a lot of tweaking over the last nine months or so, so. Um with that, I think we'll open this up for public hearing, so any individuals that wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. And again, as I said before, please state your name and city of address for the record. So are there any that would like to speak either here, in person or on the phone, we got one, great.
There we go, good evening, planning commission, Caleb Stromsted, Octair Engineering, two seven zero five, St. Andrews Loop, Pasco. Um so we're excited to see this item move forward, um staff's put a lot of work into that, that's apparent. Um we initially proposed our recommendations in December of last year, um our proposal was a a one pager. Um staff was um has, it looks like looking at that narrative. Gone above and beyond what we asked for in that, so we're very, uh it was it was actually enjoyable to work with staff on this one because it was like. And we were kinda each marching to the same tune, um we did get the actual, the text changes, uh it's an eighty-three page document, it's pretty substantial. And so we received these uh two and a half, three weeks ago, and we would like some time to review this because. The narrative for format, so we've been engaged with staff, uh these slides that were presented, um made comments on that. That we have not had a chance to review this in depth to comment, and the reason why that's important is because we're the ones that put this to work. And so we need to go through this and make sure that, one, there's there's a lot in here in this proposed check text amendments that were not included on these narrative slides. And so there's some new information that that we wanna review and we do like the 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 tabular format that staff put together. We we think it's. We're hopeful that it's all good, but we just wanna have some time to vet that, so our recommendation would to be to continue this public hearing. And uh to give us time to work with staff to make sure um this text amendment is bulletproof, because with this kinds of substantial changes. We just wanna make sure that it's just done right and we've got the time to do that, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cochran, if I may add, uh one of the things I I needed to mention was that the ordinance uh has not been finalized in terms of. Uh being vetted by our legal review, so that that certainly will need to happen and will happen before. Um this item is is shared with the the council, if there are substantial. Uh differences between the ordinance and what's been presented today, then this I may likely come back, but I think the intent is to make sure that the ordinance represents what's been shared with. Uh the commission tonight.
Yeah, I was off, I was actually gonna say kind of the same thing, is it, uh this is public record, so we're accountable to what's in this chart, so if the ordinance doesn't reflect that. We'll figure that out, so.
Thank you. Yeah, one last comment.
Go ahead.
Um in the interest, so we wanted these changes made, you know, two years ago, we submitted it a year ago. Going through these substantial change efforts, uh my encouragement to planning commission would be to piecemeal these. So we actually get actionable items into working uh ordinances effectively, as opposed to dragging them out like. These larger um initiatives tend to do, and then we'll talk about that at the street connectivity one next, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback, um commissioners, are there any questions for the commenter, um while he's still here? All right, thank you, are there anyone else that would like to speak on this one, again, please state your name and just city of address, you don't need to provide your whole address.
Uh my name is Ken Politsky, uh West Richmond, Washington, I am a realtor of the Tri-City Association of Realtors. I have worked in this community for years and helped hundreds of people buy and sell homes here. Tonight, I'm representing uh the developers that I that I work with here in the city and the home builders and. I wanna thank staff uh for making the modify modifications to the lot coverage, cause we are currently have been. Talking with them over over the last several months, uh regarding some of the constraints of the seventy-two hundred square foot minimum. Not being able to build homes that were in high demand, one of the things as realtors, we get to see as the statistics of what the consumer's looking for. And and currently in this market, you know, a twenty-two, twenty-three hundred square foot house, three car garage. Covered patio, covered front porch was exceeding the the lot coverage uh restriction, so the sixty percent is gonna help us a lot. It's also gonna help in the second topic I was gonna talk about, it was accessory dwelling units, and in some of these cases, uh one particular. We are in the process of building one that's gonna have a mother live with a son type of thing, have her own unit, which is was exceeding the lot coverage there as well. So it's really gonna help out in that matter. I'm hoping that these can be expedited through, I don't know how quickly, I know we're applying for a few variances, I'm looking at them, cause they're probably talking with the builders, but. So that we can get some of these projects rolling, cause a lot of the consumers have been waiting while we've been going through these discussions. And the builder's also waiting and of course, prices are changing all the time, just to share a few numbers with you. Um the current average prices in in the Pasco market right now for new construction. Um for the sold houses for the year to date is five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, so these are important decisions being made by you. By staff on the affordability aspect of what the residents here in the city of Pasco will have to deal with in the coming future. Pending prices are six seventy-four, that's for all the homes that are currently under construction that are under contract right now, that's a pretty tough. Price point for affordability to get home people into homes here, and of course, the average active, which are sixty-one active listings today on the market. Is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, so we got a long way to go, uh adding extra cost to development or. Uh is is one way to add into that price, increase that price, but doing things like this lot coverage modification that we've done tonight. And hopefully move forward to city council is a big step forward to actually decreasing that affordability, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Uh commissioners, any questions for that commenter? Excellent, are there any others here that wish to speak on this item? Or on the phone? Okay. Uh second call, any others that wish to speak on this item? All right, final call, any others that wish to speak on this item? All right, um commissioners, are there any other questions or comment or feedback for staff, if, oh go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, Jay, um vehicle circulation, um minimum twenty-six feet. Are you, are these, like, is this like an access road?
A turning radius. I I think you're referring to the uh right side of the table, that'd be the inside turning radius.
Okay.
I think the question is, this is just vehicle circulation in the. In that section, it's not necessarily related.
Yeah, it's not public street.
Yeah.
Related.
Uh commissioners, if there's no other questions or feedback, um I'd entertain a motion, of course, we have options, uh we can either. The recommendation by staff is to close this hearing and move this forward with a recommendation to city council. Um we have other options of continuing as well, but I'd entertain a motion or whatever, or not.
This is Commissioner Bowers, I move to close the public hearing on the proposed code amendment for Phase One Residential Design Standards. CA twenty twenty-two zero zero one and recommend the Pasco City Council adopt the proposed code amendment. As contained in the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two staff report.
I'd like to second that.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowers and seconded by Commissioner Mendez, uh all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show uh that it was unanimously passed. Uh and the next step for this is it'll go to city council in the same form we sought tonight, uh with the recommendations.
Yeah, yeah, pending the legal review, we'll make any necessary revisions and then we'll follow up probably with an old business item in the future with the finding commission.
Excellent, thank you. Uh the second item on our public hearing agenda is the code amendment for street connectivity, CA twenty nineteen zero zero one three. So it's a twenty nineteen issue, so we've been working on this one a while as well.
Commission has been, uh this, as you mentioned, uh Mr. Chair, started in twenty nineteen, uh the planning commission in August of uh. Gosh, in uh October of twenty twenty, made a recommendation to city council for uh the initial. Uh planning commission recommendation, when it went to city council, they directed staff to continue to. Uh converse with the Home Builders Association and uh in the course of those conversations. Uh and you'll see a s- slide on this shortly, in the course of those conversations, we've come up with what's in front of you tonight. Uh the result is a slightly modified recommendation that you'll see starting on the bottom of page two of this staff report. And then um one of our uh trusted and valuable consultants, and I'm not gonna try to pronounce her last name. Because I'll blow it, but um Ria will uh lead the commission through the PowerPoint presentation.
Excellent.
All right, thanks, Rick, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, wonderful, just making sure technology's working tonight. Um thank you, so with that, a a little bit of an overview, um. What we're really focused on tonight is making sure that these new street connectivity recommendations are achieving, you know, some some goals and some policies. Some pre- best practices that we have been following, and those come from a lot of different locations. Um the city council goals are very clear on this, um we also have, you know, a pedestrian, a bicycle and pedestrian master plan. That has been adopted, that's pushing us towards these, um the city has a complete streets ordinance, which is very clear that street connectivity is important. Um there's a greenhouse gas emission reduction resolution that you passed um several years ago that pushes us towards this. And then most recently, um your last round of city council goals have been directly related to this. Um we also have the comprehensive plan that has goals and policies that are related to street connectivity. And then most recently, um the transportation transportation system master plan, which I will call the T S M P tonight, um was recently adopted. And it also directly points to um the recommendations that we're going to be um discussing tonight. Next slide, Rick. All right, so with that, so we are focused on promoting community transportation network. And this is done through promoting a highly functional multimodal transportation system, which is includes. Again, application of the adopted T S M P, which had very specific policies, regulations, programs and projects. And those were related to a wide variety of transportation elements, which include um providing greater connectivity. Strategic investments, um promoting mobility, um a multimodal street system. Accessibility for all, um efficiency and safety. Next slide, Rick. All right, so take a little bit of step back, so what is connectivity? Well, the definition, it's the degree to which the transportation system provides access to destination, so. Uh pretty simple in its concept, and there are several ways that we look at connectivity, uh we look at it through access. Which is the quality of travel, uh we wanna make sure that users have options on how they get to places, um we also wanna make sure users are comfortable. Um that users, you know, can limit their risks, and we're also taking in to account the. The time, the travel time that it takes a user to make that trip. And then we wanna look at connectivity, making sure that routes that connect, you know, where our daily trips are being made, you know, but. From origins to destinations that we're accounting for that. Um and then we wanna look at mobility, I mean, how easy is it to travel in your community, uh and that applies to moving goods. Um and services and the people that are in your community. Next slide. So how do we measure connectivity, well, if we look to some strategies that are laid out from the US DOT, they have some. They have several guidelines that they promote, um they would like short block links. They would like to have a high number of intersection density, that they'd like to see lots of intersections. They wanna make sure that we're prioritizing a multi-modal system, so not just driving, but we, you know, walking and biking and transit. Uh we wanna make sure that pedestrian and bicycle facilities are safe and visible in the community. And we wanna make sure that we're following a a complete streets policy, which means that our street network is balanced between all of the users. Um you know, walking, biking, driving, transit, that all of those elements are incorporated into the design of a complete street. Next slide. So I wanna take a step back and just a little bit of a summary of what we've done before, um we've been working on these efforts for a really long time. Actually, the city's been working on this much longer than I have, um starting back in December twenty nineteen. Um that's where a street connectivity memorandum was presented to the planning commission. And then in most of twenty twenty, um January through October, um there was a quite a few, up to eight, it says. Uh workshops and public hearings that took place, um talking about the street connectivity. Um requirements and and getting some input from people, and then in the fall and spring of twenty twenty-one. Um there were several workshops and the city provided some updates to city council. Um specifically, I wanna call out that in October twenty twenty, um we had, the city staff had made some recommendations to planning commission. If you recall, um that were similar to what we're presenting tonight. And then in August of twenty twenty-one, um there was a presentation to city council and their direction that was given to staff was. To go back and do some additional evaluation and some more collaboration with the community. And that's what we've been working on since then. Next slide. So recently, we have had some meetings with the Home Builders Association of Tri-Cities, and we've really been focused on. Having a discussion with them and listening and in seeing if we can find ways where we can help achieve these council goals that are focused on transportation. Um the series of meetings started in August, uh we made a presentation to the Development Outreach Group. And then following that, we've had uh four meetings with the HBA TC group um in September and the middle of October. Um really working through the recommendations that we're making, um you know, listening to their concerns. There's a lot of different topics that we touched on, but yeah, we had four good meetings, I would say at least an hour, an hour and a half each. Um in talking through these, and then in addition to that, prior to that set of meetings. Um city staff had also met with them in September and October of twenty twenty and also in August of twenty twenty-one. Um prior to these discussions to talk through these recommendations. Next slide. Thanks, so let's jump in on the proposals that we're gonna talk about tonight. So this is a quick table that summarizes the access management standards that we are recommending. Um these would be applicable to minimum driveway spacing, which is driveway to driveway. Also, minimum access spacing standards, which is driveways um from an intersection. Uh with full access, that means all of the turn movements would be allowed, and then also. Minimum driveway spacings from intersections that are limited to right in, right out movements, and then you can see. The numbers vary as we move um from a principal arterial and then through the functional classifications of minor arterial collector. Neighborhood collector and a local access street, and you can see as we go from the higher to the lower classifications. Um the dimensions that we are recommending become shorter, um which are, um you know, the best fit for that type of facility. Right, next slide. And then this is a summary of the facility spacing standards that we're recommending, and these are right af- right out of the newly adopted. Uh T S M P report, and again, this goes through the functional classifications. And again, this goes through the functional classifications of principal arterial all the way down through minor arterial collector, neighborhood collector, local street, and then when you get to bicycle pedestrian facilities. And these are really based on best practices that transportation engineers and planners use when they're laying out their city. So it starts with the principal arterial with, you know, one to two mile spacing that we would like to see for those higher classified roads. And then we really work our way down, minor artichokes being at one mile, collector facilities being at a half mile spacing, and then neighborhood collectors being at the quarter mile spacing, local access streets being at an eighth of a mile, which is 660 feet. And then even further down, having bicycle and pedestrian connections at 330 feet. Next slide. So here's a summary of some additional street connectivity standards that are related to block length and size. And again, you can see they go from the various functional classifications from principal arterial all the way down to the local access streets. And these would set the standards for a maximum block length and then also a minimum block size. And then it sets a maximum block perimeter, so if you go around an entire block and add up all of the frontages of that block, that's the perimeter. And then again, that pedestrian bicycle maximum distance. So you can see the block length and the pedestrian bicycle facility links on here are consistent with what I had just presented, that 660 feet spacing and also the 330 feet. Next slide. So there are some, some land use applications that come with some of these standards. So for the block perimeters, they would only be applicable to lots that are within a half a mile of certain land uses that need to have this type of street connectivity to support them. These are kind of our highest priority land uses. So current and planned public transportation facilities, those would be transit facilities, public schools, libraries, and education facilities. This also includes within a half mile of parks, trails, open space and recreation facilities, and any health-related services or facilities, and this could be, you know, hospitals, you know, urgent care, health-related community services like that. And then the bicycle and pedestrian facilities have the same context. They would only be applicable to lots that are within half a mile or those same types of land uses. We wanted to make sure that these, again, are related to the types of, within a proximity of a land use that would be the highest priority for these types of connectivity needs. Next slide. All right, so there's also some policy recommendations that we're discussing tonight. One of them is ensuring that we have connectivity to abutting lands. So the street system of a proposed subdivision would be required to design to connect to the existing proposed and planned streets that are adjacent to that subdivision. So we just want to make sure that development and the design of development for the transportation system isn't happening in a vacuum. We want to make sure that the surrounding system, whether it's there or it's planned, is taken into consideration so that in the long run, the transportation system is designed the most efficiently and the most effective. And then there's also a policy recommendation for future street network, which is similar. We want to make sure that land use applications demonstrate, following the city standards, that the proposed development does not preclude future street connections to adjacent lands. So again, we just want to be smart in making sure that when a development comes in and that it's constructed, that we are considering the bigger picture. Let's take a step back and look at, you know, the adjacent lands and what are the, going to be the best transportation network decisions for them as well? And then making sure that the conditions of approval on the current development are considering that. So in the long run, we're making really good decisions. Right, next slide. All right, so this is just a bit of a graphical representation of something that I had talked about before. If you look at the graphic to the right, this is a figure right out of the TSMP. And if you're a visual person, this will help. It shows those recommended spacing standards for the various functional classification facilities. So you can see that a principal arterial is ideally spaced one to two miles apart. And then we step down to a minor arterial, which would be one mile spacing. And then we step down to a collector, that would be a half a mile spacing. And then what's not shown on this graphic is the neighborhood collectors that are at a quarter mile spacing. So if you can picture lines between collectors in the middle. And then even a step down from that are the local streets, that would be that eighth mile spacing or the 660 feet. And then the graphics to the left are kind of high level, just showing and a bit of a reminder that, you know, Pasco is really laid out on that 160 acre square, half mile spacing. So, I mean, one of the reasons that the applicability of the functional classification facility spacings that we are recommending is they align very well with the grid that your city has been laid out with from the parcel standpoint. So when we go from half mile, quarter mile, and fitting this road system in, it works really well. Next slide. All right, so the code amendments and the recommendations that we are talking about tonight follow, you know, several key things. We are looking at promoting access. Obviously, connectivity, we want to make sure that the transportation system is operating efficiently. We want to make sure that we are providing the best mobility for everyone, which relates right to multimodal. We want to make sure that, you know, pedestrian, bicycle, and transit use is promoted and easy. And we also want to make sure that the transportation system is safe for everyone. So from a benefits perspective, there's quite a few things that we're trying to achieve with these, with these proposed recommendations. The first one, the city's staff is trying to address some community input. I know through the TSMP, there were several surveys that were taken. And the theme that came from those was, we want better street connectivity for livability and being able to get around easy and having some travel options. The city has other community surveys that have been taken as well, and they all, you know, street connectivity being better always rides to the top. So we want to make sure that we're addressing the input that we've heard from the community and show them that we're listening. We're also have the benefit of implementing the recommendations from the TSMP and also following best practices. I work for dozens and dozens of agencies across the Pacific Northwest. And I think street connectivity is one of the most important elements when it comes to planning a city. I have cities that I have worked for, for over 20 years, and I've seen, you know, them implementing these regulations, having communities built in here, you know, 20 years later, seeing those communities thrive. And a lot of it comes down to a very basic element of having a short street grid and having that connectivity that really then relates to so many other, I think, you know, livability and efficiency and a lot of other goals that communities have. So I think you guys are following best practices with these recommended standards. Of course, it's important for compliance and consistency with the other plans that I've talked about tonight. And then also just having a dependable development pattern is important. I think the most important element of that is when you start thinking about emergency services and response times. I mean, we've heard directly from the city fire department, and it's really important when you pull into a neighborhood that you, you have an expectation of what that local street connectivity should look like in that development pattern. And it's really important that it's something that's easily navigable to maybe someone that's new in that area. And it can really have an impact on response times for emergencies, for emergency vehicles. And of course, there are some impacts. With the adoption of these recommendations, we are, you know, increasing regulations that are in the development code. And there's also a cost that comes with these as well. We would be adding, you know, infrastructure requirements that are needed to, you know, build an effective neighborhood. Next slide. So the city has received numerous support for these recommendations over the years. I'll just hit on a couple of these. The Washington State Department of Transportation has reached out to city staff to show their support. These regulations are very much in line with the policies and standards that the state would like to see communities like Pasco promoting. Not only to achieve your local goals, but also to help the state achieve their statewide goals, you know, for safety and multimodal and equity and connectivity. Ben Franklin Cog, you know, this, these type of recommendations really align with their goals as well. And then also Ben Franklin Transit, no surprise, they are very supportive of street connectivity standards as these. It really helps with the walking to and from trips that they would like to see for their riders. So it's easy to get to bus stops and to use their transit system. And then I already mentioned the Pasco Fire Department, but yeah, we've had discussions with them and they have full support of these connectivity requirements as well. It only helps them get to, you know, to respond to emergencies more quickly. Next slide. All right, I'm actually going to let Jacob take this one, if you don't mind, Jacob.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. I think one of the things we wanted to highlight is certainly we understand the challenges sometimes of increasing regulations and certainly increasing costs, particularly as it relates to the increasing housing crisis that many communities in the country are facing. One of the things we wanted to emphasize, however, is that Pasco has made significant strides. In fact, there's an award that the city received that's on the back of council chambers, acknowledging the efforts that the city has done to not only remove restrictive barriers in zoning policies to housing, but also moving one step beyond that, such as the effort the planning commission moved forward with just, just a few minutes ago with the residential design standards update. I think some of the criteria and the standards that we've been able to get to at this point represent a significant shift. And this is just a short version of the, of the acknowledgement and I think the importance of the changes made to the zoning code. I think more importantly, these, these were the right changes to make to our zoning code to increase access to housing. Pasco now allows accessory dwelling units on any residential parcel. That's not the same for our neighboring cities. We now allow multiple units on every single parcel. That's not the same for jurisdictions and surrounding communities. And it would be one thing if we weren't growing, both in terms of population growth and household growth, but certainly in terms of spatially. But we are, and so I think the significant changes to the zoning code with, as it relates to housing policy will likely yield significant results in the future as we expand further into our adopted urban growth area to implement our comprehensive plan.
All right, thanks Jacob, next slide. All right, let's see, so this graphic shows what the existing block perimeter conditions are in the city of Pasco today. And a reminder, the block perimeter is that distance around each block. So you can see it starts with the shorter blocks, that's the blue, the dark blue color. Those are blocks under 1,500 feet. And then the light blue are blocks from 1,500 to 2,000 feet in perimeter. And I will say that is the perimeter standard that we are recommending tonight, that, that light blue or the dark blue. And then beyond that, as the block lengths get longer, it goes through, that light green color is up to 3,000. You can see the legend, it goes from the light orange all the way through the pinkish and maybe the dark red color. So you can see in central Pasco, the shorter block perimeters are most prevalent in that area. And then as we move into West Pasco and out towards, you know, I-182, you can see those perimeters start to increase. A lot of them are, you know, even that three to 6,000 or even over 6,000 range. East of Oregon Avenue is kind of a combination of the short and medium block perimeters. And then on average today, it's, it's, the average perimeter block is 2,600 feet. So this really shows how development has changed over time. You know, from the 1920s and 30s and 40s and kind of how we went through more of a suburban development pattern till today. And we are recommending getting back to that blue and white blue block perimeter that you see in central Pasco. Right, next slide. All right, this is just a quick check on where Pasco lands with other peer cities in Washington. The graph to the left shows the standard for maximum block length for various cities. So you can see Pasco right now is at a quarter mile or, you know, that 13, 20 feet maximum block length, tied with Wenatchee, and then you can see kind of where it lands with, like I said, all those other peer cities in Washington. It showed, you know, almost the highest in this group of cities. And then on the right is, again, this Pasco standard for the average block perimeter compared to other cities in Washington. And again, it's one of the longest, many, many, many other cities have a much shorter block perimeter standard. Next slide. So how does Pasco compare when you start looking at the costs of various elements as a percentage of a total income of a household in the city? So looking at both housing and transportation combined, that's 47% of the income of a household in Pasco, which is 10th in the state. And then if we isolate just transportation, transportation costs are 24% of the total income of a household. And that's the third highest in the state. And you can see the graphic to the right compares Pasco and where they are with other peer cities in Washington, so quite a bit higher. Next slide. And then we also wanted to compare the conditions today for the schools that are in Pasco. And this is a measurement of a walk score. And if you're not familiar with that, that takes into a lot of consideration of the walking network around you and how easily accessible it is for you to make trips near you. So a score of 100 is the highest, and then the score of the zero is the lowest. So you can see these are all of the public schools in the Pasco area and the walk score that's been assigned for each of those. So there are several schools that have a decent walk score, you know, maybe above 60 or higher. And then there's a lot of schools that are, I would say, below 60, which, which is a pretty challenging environment for school children to walk to and from school. And then we also show a comparison for the city of Pasco in general. It's that 36 walk score, which is the same as the tri-cities when combined, that's a 36 walk score. Next slide. Jacob, I'll let you take this one too.
Good evening again, planning commission. We had to share this information with you at the October meeting. But as indicated in the staff report and the presentation, this effort began in December of 2019 and we came back in January 2020 with a workshop. And since that time, I think it's important to point out how much growth has occurred in Pasco and how much growth is just around the horizon. So since that time, the hearing examiner at the city of Pasco has approved 1,487 lots. There's currently approximately 884 lots going through the hearing examiner approval process right now. And the city staff is currently reviewing slightly over 800 lots pending sort of application acceptance. That's just going through the current cycle right now. On the right, what we're highlighting are the number of residential rezones. And we don't have any rezones that downzone, so we don't have any high to low ends, any rezones. All of our rezones are going from low to medium or low to high or medium to high, et cetera. We've had 24 of those approved by council since January 2020. And as you'll be reminded about later on this evening, there's approximately 1,200 acres. there's approximately twelve hundred acres of residential acres proposed for twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan amendments that are seeking to increase densities from low to medium or medium to high or low to high. Some form of the manner. So while there's close to two thousand lots that are, have been approved and would be approved within the next few months, we've got roughly twelve hundred acres of new development seeking to increase development and lots, adding trips to our system in the future. If I can add, I just wanted to add, I think the math here is kind of important. So when we did our comprehensive plan, growth management, forecasting, et cetera, that, those, those numbers with regards to the fourteen eighty-seven, the eight eighty-four and eight hundred, they represent approximately twenty percent of our forecasted twenty-year growth. So fifth of all our total growth.
All right, thanks Jacob, next slide. And with that, this is the slide that we began with, just showing a summary of our objectives that we are aiming to achieve with these proposed new street connectivity standards and the consistency and the implementation of other plans that we are working towards. So with that, I think we're done with this presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff on this proposal?
I just have a comment. I think based on the presentation, it appears that there's a lot of benefits to the proposed street connectivity standards. I think it would improve walkability, livability, quality of life, impact on reduced transportation cost. But of course, there's costs involved with, with housing, I presume. And I'm sure the HBA will let us know what, there's any outstanding issues related to increased cost on the new housing and whatnot. But certainly looks favorable to me.
Thank you. Other commissioners, comments or feedback, questions?
Can you remind me and the commissioners, we have, we don't have street connectivity standards today? Or do we have, it's not really well defined today and this is kind of the purpose behind this, right?
That's, that's correct. We have some loose language regarding the extension of public streets. But really, the only barometer we have beyond policies and comprehensive plan, et cetera, would be that right now, the only limit on how long a block could be is our block length maximum of one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. So in August of this year, when we were talking about the residential design standards update commissioner handler, you had asked about how do we prevent sort of the long blocks of townhomes or row homes being developed in Pasco? And at that time, I'd mentioned really the only requirement is still the only requirement that exists today, which is once you deduct side yard setbacks and the right away dedications from each side of that block, you could roughly have a row of thousand feet row of townhomes under, under today's standards.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a tough one, right? Because there's a lot of, a lot of masters to serve here in terms of making everybody happy. I, I look at some of this and I, you know, in some ways I see comparisons with other cities, you know, particularly on the west side. I'm like, well, I actually, I think many Pasco residents don't want to be like those cities, so we're fine being different. But at the same time, we do want our fire departments to be able to reach our streets and houses. And we want kids to be able to walk to schools. So it's really a, a challenge to find those balances in this. So with that, I'll just ask one more time for any commissioners for comments or questions or feedback before we open up the public forum or hearing.
All right, hearing done, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's any individuals that wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Again, go ahead and state your name and city of address for the record if you wish to speak.
Good evening again, planning commission, Caleb Stromstead, Pasco, Washington. It's been a little over a year since we've been up here speaking. The RIA did an amazing job with that presentation and articulation of what staff's presenting. That's something that we'll never be able to beat. Those presentations are, are top notch, so give them kudos for that. I thought it'd be helpful for everybody to go through the history of everything, because the way it's presented often leads to different interpretations. So December twenty nineteen, that's when the first workshop meeting was brought to the planning commission. I happened to be having another item on the planning commission agenda that summer and found out about what was being proposed. Was able to get the development community involved in August of twenty twenty. And so between August and it being recommended to council, that was two months. So from our perspective, the train was already rolling down the tracks. We're just trying to get input and slow her down because of the significant impacts specifically. I mean, you're talking about doing a change like this, just comparing it to our local jurisdictions, to Kennewick, to Richland, to West Richland. That should be our comparison data for our local area. And we're doing some drastic changes to that. So back to our timeline. Excuse me, the, so we had that two-month window. Our recommendations fell on deaf ears. The staff's recommendation for street connectivity went forward to city council as it was originally prepared. And then it sat dormant for seven months. And then it finally made it to a council workshop. And then it sat dormant for another three months before it went to a regular meeting. And then council, we interjected, explained to them the costing implications, we're not thoroughly vetted. And their direction was to take it back to the planning commission, collaborate with the development community and evaluate the cost impact. So we started that immediately after that meeting in twenty twenty-one. So it was August twenty twenty-one when council gave that directive. We had a meeting with the development community at the end of September. We met internally, we hashed out a plan of collaboration, like what collaboration looks like. We even broke out a book that defines how we focus on interests, not positions. Agreed, agreed to that process. Last email communication was in November of twenty twenty-one from staff saying, we'll get back to you. Eleven months later in August, we were asked to reconvene. And the last three months, we've been trying to collaborate. But what happened in that eleven-month period was the transportation system master plan was adopted, which is so prescriptive, it pretty much writes the street connectivity ordinance and we're not involved with that. So we're a little naive on the political workings on how these ordinance gets passed, but here we are today. So I understand the sense of urgency, we all do. We actually understand the, the emergency response problems. We met with the chief a number of times. There are really practical solutions to increase connectivity. The council goals can be met. That's a benefit to everybody. The way this has been going about has been rather frustrating for us because, you know, again, in our neighborhood, we were told to collaborate and that's what we expected was collaboration. Those meetings were barely listening. The recommendation you had before you today is simply to reinstitute what you submitted to council last fall, which is further backing from the TSNP that was submitted. So in our opinion, the council's specific directives from August of twenty twenty-one have not been listened to by staff or the planning commission. And so we first recommend that this record be kept open. On a parallel track, we are engaging with council. Our, our recommendation to city council is to prepare a subcommittee from the council. And we would encourage the planning commission to have a subcommittee as well to actually mediate and attend those meetings. So you can observe firsthand what collaboration looks like and what it doesn't look like. At the end of the day, as representations of the development community, we put this stuff to work. We design the subdivisions, we understand the costs, the real estate agents know the end user. We can actually come to a good resolution. This is an extreme measure and we hope planning commission understands that. We also understand that planning commission gets the air from staff every month. They've got a good budget and a lot of time to present some really good slides and they do a good job about it. We can't compete with that. We're actually considering asking council to get a budget to compete with the, the level of work that's going on here. We don't want to submit our own proposals, that's not our job. We want to work collaboratively, collaboratively with planning commission, with city staff to accomplish the council goals. And one hundred percent that hasn't happened. And I think the big takeaway we can all take away from this is collaboration can't happen once the cake has been made. The cake was made in twenty twenty and there's no change in it once it's made. And as you can see, nothing substantial has changed, except for we were left in the dark while the TSNP was approved. And now staff has the backing of that document to force the street connectivity ordinance. So again, final request is to continue this hearing and also look forward to more challenging questions to staff, because they need to be held accountable for what they're doing. And we'll help you with that and also encourage them to collaborate. Listening is not collaborating. Objectively looking at things, that's collaboration and that has not happened yet. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I just have a question. Is there specific standards that HBA is subjecting to related to spacing standards, connectivity issues, perimeters?
How much time do I got? That's a great question, Commissioner Mendez. In short, connectivity can be achieved in a cost-effective way that meets the goals of the planning, or the goals of the city council. And it's, and more, you know, importantly, the urgency should be towards fire response. And on a high level, emergency response times is collectors connected to subdivisions. So we've got a number of existing subdivisions inside the city. Where the collector arterial road, there's, you know, thousand, two thousand feet. Over there's limited between accesses into that subdivision, so that subdivision has limited access points. There's a couple situations where subdivisions back up to each other for half a mile and there's no road connecting them. Simple standards like that that we can implement again, we could have implemented those two years ago. Back to what I said on the design standards, we got to piecemeal this thing. Get, get, get some effective legislation out there, it's because we all want this. We're actually designing subdivisions with a lot of this stuff already in play as respect to council's wishes. Planning commission and staff, because we know that that's important, it's doing, we're putting in the mid-block pedestrian crossings. We're providing stub streets, so this stuff is happening. And so that's important to know. But at the end of the day, it's, it's significant on cost and it reduces density. So it flies in the face of two things. You increase the cost of housing significantly. We provided a simple sketch in August of twenty twenty that said, if you take an existing subdivision and you, you implement the block standards, that would decrease the density twelve and a half percent and it would increase the development cost seventeen grand per lot. We then had a homeowner or a home builder come in and say, when you prorate that out, by the time he gets to the end user, that could be up to thirty thousand dollars per lot to the end user. That's significant. Again, we brought that up in August of twenty twenty. That got council's attention, we hope it gets your attention. We hope this gets, like I said, does that answer your question, Commissioner Mendez?
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the commenter? Right, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Are there any other individuals who wish to speak on this item? Go ahead and come forward and state your name and city of address.
Matt Heire, Kennewick, Washington. So I'm the government affairs director for the Tri-Cities Association of Realtors. Specifically, I'm here tonight on behalf of our government affairs committee and our twelve hundred members that can provide their services in your city. The HBA community alerted us to potential increased housing costs that are involved in this plan. Just this past September, local realtors joined the collaborative process between city staff and the development community. I'm just kind of want to go over some basic bullet points here that I've kind of taken some notes on and wanted to put forward tonight. But I really want to stress this aspect, that our local association's goals completely support the mission of Washington Realtors and the National Association of Realtors to help design and grow data-driven cities that promote smart growth, walkability and multimodal transportation. To this point, I applaud the conversations that are taking place in this room. Fine work by Jacob Gonzalez, as well as planning commission for even having these discussions. It's very forward-thinking and I appreciate you for tackling these trends head-on. However, the, the plan put forth tonight has not allowed time for this collaborative process to yield the positive results that could be incorporated into this proposal. This proposal is far too drastic for a city the size of Pasco. Instead, there are multiple paths that could be taken to get a plan over the finish line very soon. I am yet to see accurate data polling, surveys or statistics that Pasco residents specifically are in support of this proposal or that they are knowledgeable of how impactful the changes would be to their community. Not that surveys haven't been done, but how you ask the question and interpret the data are what matters. None of the groups supporting this proposal are as involved in your housing market locally as your developers, builders and realtors. In this instance, we three entities are all unified in opposition to this proposal in its current form. This is a major decision that requires a little more time. I'd like to personally leverage assistance from the National Association of Realtors and additionally form a subcommittee with some council and planning commission members that act as mediators. I'm confident that all parties' interests can be included. And personally, from the Realtor's perspective, we would be put at ease if we knew that there was a lock tight survey with statistics that were, the results were clearly spelled out to your specific residents here in Pasco, not the broader area, not nationally. I do recall, I think it was August of twenty twenty, I went through a memo put forward to the planning commission that actually referenced a NAR survey that fifty-three percent, which I remind you is a slight majority, but fifty-three percent of Americans are in favor of walkability in their communities. It was left out, though, in that survey, that the respondents to it were only from the largest fifty cities in the United States. I, I, I think that we can get there. I would just like to take a little more time to make sure that everyone's come, comes to the table. And there has been a little disconnect between staff since we've come on board that we've seen between staff and the developers. But I, I do think that one or two of you and potentially one or two council members could help and assist in finding a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions for the commenter? Okay, thank you for being here. Anyone else that would like to speak on this item, please go ahead and come forward and state your name and city of address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Stephen Baumann and I'm from here in Pasco. I'm not an unfamiliar face to you, I've been here a number of times before and on this specific topic. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on it again. Just have a few bullet points that I wanted to visit with you about. One of the, my first one was referenced before, is the transportation system master, master plan happened in a vacuum that we as developers and engineers in this community were not invited to the table to potentially influence, but certainly to, to add a voice as impacted, the impacted community to that. And that transportation system master plan is now being used to justify this. And when this almost unchanged document was first brought, it was other justification was used. And now the transportation system master planned. And now the transportation system master planned that was, that was passed without our input is being used to justify, and that's unfortunate. Um, I wondered if we could go to the slide that showed the percent of income that is used for travel. I I, there was a number of slides there that I, that I feel that, that didn't accurately reflect a comparison. So this, this slide here. Our, our community is an agricultural-based community. And, and, and our, by and large, our, our largest percentage, and I didn't bring the, the actual statistics with me tonight. But, but the largest employment in our community is in the ag community. And that requires travel. Farms aren't in town. You gotta travel to those to get there. So if we look at, at Yakima, it is fair to compare us similarly, similarly to Yakima because they're an ag-based community. It's not fair to, to compare us to Auburn. Because there's no similarities in, in the statistics of our community and, and what we use travel for. So I think that, that uh as we go through these, these slides, um, I think that, that we need to be more careful to compare apples to apples. Because to compare Pasco to Tacoma is, is, is an unfair comparison. So that was just a observation and there's numerous ones that uh, that I think that meet that, that same critique. There's one thing that, that I noticed here tonight that I think that is a glaring um piece that is missing to this that we have brought as a concern. Um, I'm a developer myself. Uh, my own land in Pasco, numerous parcels, um, and I'm actively in the process of developing them. As well as I'm a consultant for other landowners and to develop on their behalf. And there, we have brought it numerous times forward that we are concerned with what this implementation would do to the cost of development. And I think that this is, really needs uh careful scrutiny and a cost comparison. We've asked for it numerous times. We have provided um analysis from our side. It was critiqued and it was said, well, we don't know where that, that analysis comes from, so it was discounted. Um, I think that this needs a careful cost analysis. Uh, previously Caleb pointed out that uh this could be thirty thousand dollars a lot. Um, on one hand, the city is actively going after grants to study um affordable housing. And on the other hand, we're considering implementing something that has the potential to be thirty thousand dollars increase per lot in development cost. And at the same time, this additional um connectivity in cross streets reduced density um in a massive way. Another piece that I wanted to point out, um, that was pointed out before, but I really wanted to, to uh to highlight it again is it was, it was said before that it was, it was colla, you know, the collaborative changes. So I wanted to, to say in one of these, you see, there's been a lot of meetings since, since we were here last time. And one of those was be the collaborative part has not been there. And in one of the last meetings that I was in, I pointed that out and I asked very specifically, can you point out anything that has changed from your plan from where we started? We have come to the table as developers and seen the need in a lot of ways, concerns that were pointed out and we said, yes, we agree that that needs to be done. Um, mid-block uh pedestrian crossings and those type of things, we see the need and are willing without, without question. We have come to the table and said, yes, that's a real need. The community is asking for it and, and we don't see a problem with that. So in this meeting, I ask, we've come to the table, is there anything that you can say that you've come to the table with? And I was told by staff, we feel like that we started at the destination. And that's really unfortunate. Um, there is no collaboration when the cake has already been baked. You can't, you can't work together on the ingredients when, when it's already in the oven. So thank you for this opportunity. Um, I agree with the two previous where that I think subcommittees should be formed. Um, that include both city council as well as the planning commission and members from Realtors to developers to the engineering community. And uh most of all, I think a very detailed cost analysis of what this implementation would cost. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here. Uh, commissioners, any questions uh for the commenter?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else that is here to speak on this particular item? Again, please come forward and uh state your name and city of address for the record.
Hello, my name is Bill Barlow. I live in Kennewick and I work for Ben Franklin Transit and I'm hundred percent in favor of this connectivity proposal. Uh, I, I want to go back to the analogy about the baked cake. The cake was baked long before twenty twenty. Our problem is trying to serve the neighborhoods of Pasco. We can't go into the neighborhoods of Pasco. We're faced with eight hundred to a thousand foot of running fence with a required sidewalk along it with no pass into those communities. Those people have to walk out and around to get to our buses. A lot of times those sidewalks are two and three feet higher than the curb line. So we can't make an ADA connection. Uh, the development that's gone on in the past is really unservable. And if it isn't put to a stop, a hard stop now, you're gonna have the same thing. Look at the number of proposals that are already going to be approved under the old regulations. It really is time to put some controls on the kind of growth that I've seen in Pasco. We have much better service in most of the other communities in Richland and Kennewick. We really struggle and we're chasing that old pattern of low-density sprawl. And we chase it. We can't even get in front of it. So I gotta tell you, it's really is time to push through this regulation and do it now. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? All right. Make a second call. Anyone else want to speak on this particular item? And none online, right? All right. Final call. All right. With that, um, I'll open it up for commissioners. Any other final comments or questions to staff around this item? Maybe the commissioners have.
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Go ahead.
I have a question around the walk score of schools. And maybe Ray can help me out with that. Um, on average, it was forty-eight percent is the walk score for schools nationally. And nationally, who pays for uh sidewalks? Is it on average, schools or the city? Do you have that information?
The, the question is who, who pays for the sidewalk infrastructure?
Yes, nationally.
Can't answer about nationally, but I think most jurisdictions, the cost of the adjacent infrastructure, the sidewalk in front of your home, your development or a school site or business would be um required at the cost of development, so borne by the applicant themselves. So for instance, if a school is proposing a site, they would be required to install and pay for the sidewalk infrastructure.
All right. Would there be a way to be able to uh get that answer?
Well, I, I don't think there's a clarity on the question. Is it, do you want to know, is it the nation, the nation, nationally who pays for that or how we do it in Pasco? What is the?
Yeah, yeah, we just compared a statistic of um Pasco's walk, walk score of our schools compared to nationally. And so it would be interesting to find out if we're comparing the two, if uh this have the same uh conditions on who pays for the street or for the sidewalks.
I, I think the specifics, we could certainly try to attempt to answer that question, but in terms of the methodology of the walk score itself, it typically takes into account the access point uh to and from in the surrounding vicinity around a school site, including the surrounding land uses itself. Which um those variety of inputs lead to the result that we see on the screen today. I, I do not believe they take into account the funder of the, the infrastructure themselves, but we can certainly look into that um question to an extent, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And, and isn't it true that, that I guess, I thought the comment was made is walk scores below fifty are generally less favorable than those above fifty and that's probably based on a national kind of baseline?
Okay. Any other questions or feedback from staff, to staff from the commissioners?
Does walk score uh solely just how far you're walking or does it consider like if we were to add, um, you know, the more requirements, how there would be, you know, your, your kid would be going through a lot more intersections or, you know, across streets more? Does it consider other factors other than just distance?
Yes, I think the, this goes back to, I think one of the first lies regarding quality of uh the transportation uh mode itself. Um, and direct, directness of the route. Um, and also with regards to walks where they do take into account the surrounding land uses as well. In terms of how this proposal would impact existing school sites, I, I'm not sure that it would. Uh, because they're already well-built out. Um, so for the expanded urban growth area or for infill uh development, this certainly would have an impact. Um, but I think in terms of schools that are already developed, whether in central Pasco or northwest Pasco, et cetera. Um, I, I think there's probably limits, very, very strict limits about what this proposal would do based on the existing infrastructure that already exists there.
Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah. Hi, this is um Commissioner Bowers. And I just would love to hear from staff a reaction to a number of the people who just testified um regarding the lack of collaboration um on this particular uh proposal regarding street connectivity.
Yep. Uh, well, I guess I can, I could start with that. Maybe Director Rick White can, can add. Uh, we, we reached out to the development community hoping to um end up with a result that uh would be uh uh an attempt to meet council objectives, uh the variety of planning efforts that the city has adopted uh as of late. Uh, we, we did uh ask the uh members of the H B A to actually lead uh several of the meetings, including developing the agenda themselves. Um, unfortunately, we uh, I don't think we ended up at a result um that we could bring back to the planning commission, at least as a recommendation from staff's perspective.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments uh from commissioners? Uh, hearing done. I think we have a couple of options here. We, we have a, a recommendation for staff from a motion. Uh, we also have the option of continuing this uh to another public hearing in the future. Um, we also have an option of making a motion towards the feedback we got about um a recommendation to council, I suspect, around a subcommittee that could be planning commission members, staff and council members. That is completely in our ability to make a motion for as well. So um, I'm open to uh motions for any of those things from the commissioners.
I, I'd like to see the committee formed with the uh additional uh members from the community participating with the council. I think that's a great idea. Uh, if, if it makes sense uh in the procedures here.
Yeah. Can staff comment? I mean, I think it would be something we just have to recommend to the council. The council has to create the subcommittee, I would guess, and the council can certainly make members of themself. They can pick themselves as well as some of us that are, if there would be any of the commissioners are willing and it's plus representatives from the public, I suspect, but for us, it's just a recommendation, right? Is that how would, the procedural?
Yes, it's a recommendation and um I'm not no motion has been made yet, but if one is made to that effect, I would uh request the commission at least have a couple of planning commission members that are willing to be on that committee identified tonight.
Okay. Uh, well, let me ask the commissioners then, um, if we make that motion, are there uh at least a couple of us that would be willing to serve on that subcommittee with council members and members of, say, the home builders and others?
I would.
So we have uh good, we have at least one. Are there others? So have Commissioner Handler? Any others?
I would, I would also.
Commissioner Mendez, great. I think two is at least, I mean, I think we can carry forward at least two is probably satisfactory. You don't need any, any more than that, but um anyone else that would want to throw their name in the hat? Okay, then I think the, you know, I'll, I'll open it up for a motion to that effect that Commissioner Handler and Mendez would be part of a volunteer that would make a recommendation to the council for a subcommittee. Obviously chartered by the council. And again, it's just a recommendation. The council may choose not to do that.
Yeah, so I saw move that we uh do the um subcommittee uh as, as discussed.
Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Handler that uh we recommend to the council um that a subcommittee be formed with at least Commissioner Handler and Commissioner Mendez as volunteers, as well as committee, uh council members. Uh, and as well as uh members of the public or the home builders or whoever. Uh, and it has been, I believe, seconded by Commissioner Bowers. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. All right. Uh, the, the motion recommended to city council to form the subcommittee has unanimously passed. Um, uh, staff, I know that you've worked a long number of years on this and so we, um, I think it sounds like that's a consensus of what we want to do.
Um, this is Commissioner Lerman.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Motion.
What's that?
May amend the emotion.
Uh, sure.
Okay. Um, so as the motion reads, but add in um fire or police service um representative in the committee.
Yeah, you know, I think probably we can, I don't know that we need to make that specific specificity. I think the council is the one who charters the, the subcommittee. They will decide and we can certainly pass along that recommendation. I don't know that it needs to be in our motion, but that's, that's a great idea. It should include, be inclusive of fire, transit and others, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Uh, we, we have moved through to the last item on the public hearing with, our public hearing, which is the downtown Pasco master plan. I'll open up to staff to kick that one off.
Uh, good evening again, members of the planning commission. Uh, excited to bring back to you the uh downtown Pasco uh plan. Um, we've been working on this effort with our consultants uh for about a year now. Um, and this effort has uh um included significant community engagement and outreach and we're excited to bring this back to you today for a uh recommendation of approval to council. Uh, next slide, just wanted to summarize a few slides. Um, the plan itself, I know you heard this from uh us back in September and August. But it really is a plan that's focused on a vision guided by goals, achieved the strategies but realized through specific actions and the uh, this is a plan of actions. And so without the implementation of this plan, the plan itself will not essentially just kind of sit on the shelf, which is what we kind of say in the planning world all the time. So next slide, uh, kind of a high-level overview of the goals of the plan itself. As expressed, uh, both through the engagement process and through the input received, uh variety of community uh members, stakeholders, residents and businesses, both within and outside of the downtown area. And, and those are uh creating a downtown that is lively and authentic. Uh, a downtown that has a district showcasing our history here in Pasco. Um, embracing and creating new connections to the river. And uh having a place that's um a place for all to enjoy, uh regardless of age. And so on the next several slides, we wanted to share the difference, um slight difference actually in terms of the live polling that took place. We did engagement events in October.
the live polling that took place. We did engagement events in October, and actually, two nights ago, we had one here in the council chamber, so we just wanted to run through those with you, so you could see the results in the community, and also what likely will yield upcoming code amendments as we move forward in implementing the master plan. So when we asked about the master plan priorities, priorities in terms of implementation, very similar, active and safe streets and places for all ranked high, downtown that reflects people, reflects Pasco's history, people and culture, investment for the private sector, so what can we do to encourage and incentivize private sector investment, and also working with our downtown development authority to increase some of the management operations that occur downtown. On the next slide, we talk about streets and strategies to activate them and make them safe. And towards the top priorities included improving the lighting and safety, that came up number one in October, rightsizing and enhancing the downtown streets for activity and mobility through catalyst projects, and creating a downtown park program. And in November, you can see the slight shift where rightsizing and enhancing the downtown streets came up as number one. Also, what rose to number two was developing a programming plan for streets and public spaces, and again, improving lighting and safety also ranked fairly high. On the next polling question, we asked, what are some of the strategies we can do to promote private sector development? And this one is what really is going to yield some actions that'll begin fairly soon at the planning commission. That includes updating our land use and our zoning standards. We're currently working on amendment to our land use to establish downtown land use, that's happening right now, managing and updating the building development and street use codes, and pursuing projects, pursuing catalyst sites and consider public-private partnerships. In November, again, to facilitate development of opportunity sites rose pretty high, and typo there, but updates to our land use and zoning code as well. And on this slide, we asked the community members to rank the strategies that reflect Pasco's history, people, culture, and landscape. And number one by far was establishing, establishing a public mural and public art program. That's something that's been ongoing, so we'll work with our arts commission to help that move forward. Marketing and community strategy for locals and visitors, how do we attract more people downtown, and integrating sustainability and resilience into our downtown and all the actions that take place downtown, so to make sure that they're sustainable in terms of their finance, financial sustainability and downtown viability as well. So a few next steps for us. One would be a hopeful adoption of the downtown Pasco master plan. The implementation scope, which we are working with our consulting team at Framework, which you've heard from before, to sort of develop an implementation plan for us over the next year or so, so that this plan can continue moving forward, which can include a variety of code and development regulations and amendments that will be brought to the planning commission first. We are working with BDS Planning and Urban Design, they were an engagement consultant for the master plan, and we will be seeking their help to help us with the downtown management aspect. And then also with the, with the friendly support from the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, we also have an opportunity to do some brownfield and reuse plan assessments for some sites downtown, in particular, the old Thunderbird site, to identify what would be the best use for that in the near term, and potentially what would be the best use for that in the long term for the success of downtown. So really short presentation on the downtown Pasco master plan. It was included in the staff report to the commissioners. Happy to answer any questions I can this evening. Outside of that, staff is seeking a recommendation of approval of the downtown Pasco master plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, are their questions are based on your review of the master plan, their feedback for staff, comments for staff?
So, I don't mean to sound like a stuck record, but I don't see a lot of discussion in this master plan about encouraging housing. And that, and that really is bothersome to me, having been involved in many master plans, and the most successful master plans that have sustainability are those that have a large housing component. So with, you know, I'm not going to keep harping on this, I just, I just think it's an important aspect to a, to a master plan, and unfortunately, I don't see a lot of discussion about encouraging housing, so just wanted to air that.
Have you, has that come up in the workshops or the open houses a lot?
Not so much with the community members, but both staff and our consulting team have prioritized housing in the sense of how we can increase not only more housing, but housing density in both the downtown today and the expanded downtown land use, which is part of the land use amendment that's on the next item tonight. That, that's a big component of updating the land use and zoning code, is to change the development standards to actually allow for increased housing densities in terms of height, density, and potentially typology as well. So that part actually is kind of being implemented right now, also with the Housing Action Plan, which is underway. The downtown area will be a significant key area for the Housing Action Plan as well, to increase housing in central Pasco.
So there's nothing in the current master plan that precludes any of that stuff, it's just being done, maybe managed as a separate, in a separate artifact or whatever?
Yeah, and I'll make this note, and we can certainly go back to our consulting team and ask that they put it in there as it needs to be. But yeah, the housing discussion with regards to central and downtown Pasco is a fairly significant priority for both this planning effort and staff's other housing-related efforts as well.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, no, so that sounds good. I, I just encourage that we think about housing. You have people living in and around downtown, you know, and, you know, it tends to keep the downtown vital. You know, I'm not saying anything you guys don't already know, and I, it, it's not going to shut down at 5:30 or 6 o'clock at night, it's going to, it's going to have the potential of creating a vibrant downtown, even after the business is closed. But, so, I just, whatever we can do, I would encourage us to get, to encourage housing in the, in the master plan. You know, I'm saying, you know, you know what I'm talking about, Jacob.
And Commissioner Handler, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's an important step in the implementation in the, in the plan, in the back of the plan. And I know it was even Monday or Tuesday night, I guess, it was talked about at the open house, so, yeah.
Excellent. Commissioners, any other questions or comments or feedback on the master plan or the presentation?
I mean, it's exciting, actually, you know, what you've got going here, you've done, you've done a lot of great work, but, you know, so pardon my comments, but.
Anyone else before I open it up? This is a public hearing item, so we want to allow anyone here to speak on this, the opportunity. Okay, hearing done, I'll open the public hearing. Any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, please come forward now, and again, state your name and city address for the record. All right, I'll make a second call for anyone that wishes to speak on this item. And third and final call, anyone that wishes to speak on this item? All righty, we'll close the public hearing. I think the, the recommendation from staff is that we, the motion is documented there for us, which is a recommendation to close the public hearing and recommend the council. Of course, we can continue this, of course, we can, you know, there's other options, but I'll entertain a motion for any of those things.
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Go ahead.
No, I think it's your turn, go ahead.
This is Commissioner Bowers, and I move to close the public hearing and recommend the Pasco City Council adopt the downtown Pasco master plan as contained in the November 17th, 2022 staff report.
Seconded.
Is that Commissioner Lerman that seconded, or Commissioner?
Yes.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bowers and seconded by Commissioner Lerman. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay? All right, let the record show that the motion passed unanimously. And that takes us to the end of the public hearing items, and we have one or two other things on the agenda. And the first is a workshop item that's a memo on the 2022 comprehensive plan amendments.
Good evening, for the second to last time tonight, planning commission members. This is just a quick update on where we're at with the comprehensive plan amendments for the 2022 docket cycle. You may recall back in the spring and early summer, you made a recommendation to council to establish the docket, and that was adopted, sorry, via resolution by council earlier this fall, so we're here tonight to talk about the remaining components to the cycle. So the next slide, there's a separate set of criteria for actually adopting the amendments related to the first, what you would expect, which is, does a proposal amendment bear a substantial relationship to the public health, safety, and welfare and protection of the environment? Is it consistent with the variety of cities' plans, policies, comprehensive plans specifically? Does it correct an obvious mapping error? And actually, we have three of those proposed amendments this cycle. Does an identifying deficiency in the comprehensive plan as well? Now, the next slide, there's some additional components as well related to the eventual decision from the planning commission. It's important to remember that the comprehensive plans are living documents, but they do provide a set of strategies, goals, and a vision for the future with regards to land use, housing, transportation, economic development, parks, recreation, et cetera. And so that'll be something that we'll bring back to you to have kind of in the back pocket as you make decisions on the proposed amendments. And on the next slide, so we had 18 initial applications submitted, six were city-initiated and 12 were private. Now, on the private side, one was withdrawn voluntarily by the applicant, and one other was denied by the city council. So in total, there are 16 comprehensive plan amendments on the docket for 2022. On the next slide, a list of those amendments, you can see the blue item 005, about midway through the list. That application was withdrawn by the applicant, and the comprehensive plan amendment, you may recall the lengthy public hearing back this spring on Hopkins Streets, that was denied, Hopkins Street, that was denied by council. And on the next slide are the city efforts to amend the comprehensive plan with the downtown land use, the Broadmoor Master Plan, several map corrections, and also text amendments to defend the future land use descriptions and densities in particular. So in terms of the process, just wanted to give you a quick introduction, because this will likely be a lengthy meeting in December, where we will have a workshop and then a public hearing and recommendation in January for the planning commission. So happy to answer any questions I can this evening. We just wanted to give the planning commission a little bit of an update of where we're at with this process. It is typical in cities where the cycle goes beyond the one calendar year. I think particularly in our case, as we initially had 18 amendments because of the fact we hadn't had that process for several years. So it'll take a year or so to kind of get back on a yearly cycle, but that's totally, that's normal, and it's allowed by the Grow-
Management Act.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I think we recommend, we recognize a lot of those from the previous discussions, so good to see kind of the disposition on those. Commissioners, do you have any questions or feedback for staff on this workshop item? All right, hearing done, thank you for that, Jacob, and I guess we will move through that. And the last piece of business is, I assume we want to discuss our meeting schedule for 2023, or some tweaks or whatever, and-
Yes, and thank you again for the last time tonight, I think, for the members of the planning commission. This is actually with regards just to January. I mean, we can come back in December with a little bit more of a discussion on it, but we expect to have quite a bit of amendments and items before you in December, and then again in January. One of them was removed off the agenda today with the adoption of, or recommendation of the design standards, but there are several others, particularly as we begin to implement the downtown master plan. So in January, we are seeking your, your input and potential recommendation on if you would entertain either hosting two meetings in January, one for our normally scheduled items, and a second one for the comprehensive plan, public hearing and recommendation, or potentially just pushing back the meeting to the 26th of January instead of the 19th. We wanted to give you some ample time to ponder that decision, and we can come back in December with more of a confirmation if that's appropriate, but essentially asking if you would be okay with two meetings in January, or maybe pushing it back towards the 20, on Thursday, the 26th of January, to have a longer meeting but given us more time to prepare, both planning commission, and certainly staff, and any of those members in the public who would like to attend or provide comment.
Excellent. Commissioners, would you like, if you want to provide any feedback now, please do. We have a month to think about it, it sounds like, but I suspect that most, based on most folks' schedule, they'd probably rather do one longer meeting than two, but if you have any feedback now, that's great, or just become prepared for the December meeting with kind of what you want to do there. So if anyone has any feedback now, please, please speak up.
I'm okay with two meetings, and with all due respect to what the other commissioners want to do, I'll chime into that. But what dates again, Jacob?
January 26th would be the one meeting. What about the two?
Yep, so our normally scheduled date would be January 19th, and that would be the typical-
Oh, 19, 19 and 26?
Correct. If we wanted to do two meetings on the Thursdays, those would be the two dates.
I'm okay with that, but I yield to the other commissioners and respect their schedules.
Yeah, and we don't have to decide tonight, we can tell you in December. But anybody else want to weigh in with kind of where they're at on this? If not, just think about it and be prepared to kind of present where you're at in December.
One other thought, you could start the meetings earlier, too. I mean, instead of six, maybe go to 5:30 or something, if that would help, if that would, if that could, if that's a consideration.
Yeah, I would defer to the other commissioners, but I would prefer to give the staff additional time and go for the, for the longer meeting, and if we have to start a little earlier, get more done, so that's, that's my input, thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else?
I'm leaning towards what Paul just stated.
Sorry, what?
I'm leaning towards what Paul just stated, having it on the 26th and started a little bit earlier.
Excellent. Well, again, we don't have to decide tonight, just let's, let's all vote next week, or next month, sorry. All right, well, with that, I would, no other agenda items on the agenda are business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All right, moved and seconded, the meeting is adjourned at 8:28 PM.